Good evening, everyone. Today is October the 6th, 2020. Our thought for today is a fallen leaf is nothing more than a summer's wave goodbye. Author unknown. I want to go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. Are we going to ask that, how about Commissioner Cowan? If you would, give us our invocation tonight. And Commissioner Schultz, if you would, give us our pledge tonight, please.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you, dear God, for your blessings, Lord. Or we thank you for our county, Lord, and the people that live here and make up every aspect of the community here. Or we just ask that you give us wisdom and grace, Lord, as we make a decision tonight, Lord. Lord, help us to be wise in our decisions, Lord. Pray, God, that you'll continue to bless our county, bless those that are still affected by this COVID, Lord. Pray that you'll just heal those people and bring them back to being able to resume their lives, Lord, as normal. Lord, we just pray for all the things that you've given us, and we just thank you for them. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next on the agenda is adopt the agenda. I seek a motion, please, for the agenda adoption. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Schultz. All in favor? It passes 5 to 0. Next is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only. You may comment this time. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Citizen comments, agenda topics only. You may comment this time. Please come up and state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so.
John Dobbs. I live at 211 Drive on Row. Is on the agenda is an article about the, that was in the paper about Mr. Barnes and Ms. Bell want a suit of county.
You can come up.
About a pay raise.
You can come up at the end of the meeting and make your comments. It's about agenda topics only.
Okay.
Okay. Agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. Thank you. Next is on the, next is the chairman's report. Tonight we have Ms. Ashley with us, Ashley Best with Newton County 4H Extension Office. And she has some kiddos and some team players with her tonight. So if you would, please come up and tell us a little bit about what you do over at the 4H office. And we do have a proclamation for you guys also tonight.
So my name is Ashley Best, and I'm the Newton County Extension Agent, as well as the County Extension Coordinator. And I would like to introduce you all to our new 4H educator. This is Charlene Scott, and she has plenty of experience with 4H, and we are so blessed to have her in our office. So I'm going to let her talk a little bit about 4H because that's really what tonight's about because it's National 4H Week, and that's what the proclamation is.
Good evening. As she said, my name is Charlene Scott, and today is officially my first day. So hitting the ground running.
Welcome aboard.
But it is National 4H Week. So with that, we think about all the things that we do in 4H. One of the biggest things being public speaking. So here we are, public speaking, which is quite hard to do right now in COVID land. But all is going well. So in honor of National 4H Week, if people are following us on our social media, we are doing a Spirit Week. We're also kicking off with Recruitment Week to recruit new members, get people returning, re-registered, to kick off the year for our 4H nights that are going to be coming up throughout the year. And we will do 4th grade through 12th grade.
Thank you.
There's a really awesome video online if you want to go check it out on the Newton County YouTube.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. We know that you, y'all do so many different things here in our community with 4H. I know COVID has kind of put a hamper on things that you're able to do. I know some of the trips that you guys normally do have been kind of postponed, so. But y'all are still trying to help the kids out and encourage the kids and teach them. So we really do thank you guys for what you do in this community.
Thank you.
Commissioners, y'all have any questions? Anything y'all want to say to them before we issue this proclamation? We're going to do a group picture photo with everybody. Y'all don't mind, do you commissioners? Thank you. It says Georgia National 4H Week Proclamation. I'm going to step back from you guys. Whereas the young people of Georgia and Newton County are our greatest natural resource. And where, whereas the 4H program has assisted in the growth and development of Georgia and Newton County youth for 116 years. And whereas adult volunteers, leaders, and advisors are devoting their talents, leadership, and resources to serving these leaders of tomorrow. And whereas 4H helped its members discover and acquire the essential elements of positive youth development of mastery, generosity, belonging, and independence in the areas of leadership, civic engagement, healthy living, and science. And whereas Newton County is Georgia 4H and entices young people and adults to become involved in educational and entertaining programs offered by the 4H program in Newton County through the University of Georgia College of Agriculture and Environmental Science Cooperative Extension. Now therefore, be it resolved that our Chairman Marcelo Baines of the Newton County Board of Commissioners do declare and proclaim the week of October the 4th, October the 4th through the 10th, 2020, to become Newton County 4H Week and urge all our citizens to assist in according and observance and attention and importance to which this is rightly entitled. In the witness word, I have set unto my hand and affixed my hour seal on the 6th day of It is 4H Week. Guys, and we so much are proud of y'all. Thank y'all for what y'all do. Thank y'all for the leadership that y'all show these kids and develop throughout our community. We're going to ask that the board would come up and take a picture with you guys as we Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, okay. We'll pick a number six. Also, early voting starts on the 12th next week. So guys, please, please be advised. That's all we have for the chairman's report next week. Well, the county manager, Mr. Kerr, is feeling ill tonight, and he cannot be with us tonight. So we're going to skip the county manager's report, and we're going to go down to old business. County Attorney Megan Martin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, before you tonight, you have a revised policy regarding enterprise procurement policy for minority business owners. I have reviewed, and it has been revised to include women as a part of our definition of minority. The only item that I'm suggesting to change, I would ask that you approve with this change, is where the word sex is used to define, we're going to put gender instead so that we would be inclusive of all. So if a motion to approve was made, it would be motion to approve minority business enterprise procurement policy, subject to the revision of the word sex to gender.
Thank you, ma'am. Guys, I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I make a motion as stated by the county attorney with the substitutions.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Guys, I just want to add, I also talked to Mr. Kerr about adding disadvantaged, I mean this, yeah, disabled veterans also. And he's going to look at the legal part of that and also see can we add disabled veterans to that as well. Any more discussion? Commissioner Cowan.
Just a comment. A lot of folks think sometimes things are either Democrat or Republican issues, but we noticed this past week President Trump authorized a $500 billion proposal for minority businesses. And it's just, it's just interesting that it's timely, same time going on with this.
Commissioner Henderson, I'm sorry. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I guess a question, Commissioner Cowan, when do we see the money?
Like anything else with the federal government.
You got to wait.
Thank you, guys. All in favor? It passes 5 to 0. Thank you so much. Next is the consent agenda. I seek a motion for approval, please.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Can I get a, thank you, sir. It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5 to 0. Next is item number nine. Senior service purchasing request, requesting approval of agreement. Attorney Martin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a contract before you all regarding installing vending machines at senior services. Payment for the machine will come out of those collections, which is 5% of a monthly commission. The contract was reviewed by legal, and all of our revisions were accepted.
Thank you. I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this, my understanding is that these are all healthy snacks, and I think that's a great opportunity for our seniors to have vending machines that have healthy snacks in them. So I would move for approval of the agreement with delectable vending.
Thank you, sir. It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Pass 5 to 0. Thank you. Item number 10. Board consideration of an amendment to the town square agreement with Covington. Attorney Martin, please.
Thank you, Chairman Baines. You all received two emails from Sam Van Bulkenberg regarding alcohol open container on the city square. We have put forward revisions to that agreement. To give you a flavor of what we have, the city's ordinances indicate that only beverages that will be allowed for consumption are those sold by licensed restaurants within the historic districts. All of the beverages must be in a clear plastic cup with the city's logo. Each customer must wear a wristband while consuming. Additionally, today, Sam followed up with some more information, giving you potential holidays and other times that, for example, St. Patrick's Day or 4th of July, those are the type of holidays that, or events that would be occurring on the square. Of course, we do know that they do the musical concerts during the day, and those things will continue as well. But if I can answer any questions for you, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I'm going to let you, commissioners who have questions, ask questions before we get a motion on the floor. Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, let's see if I understand this. This would, is consumption of alcohol on the green space allowed under current intergovernmental agreement?
No, not open. No, not open. Open containers, that's why they're seeking the revision.
Okay. So they can continue, you know, they can do anything they want to on the sidewalks, but they cannot use the green space on the square as part of a open container area? Is that right?
That's the way it is now. They're looking to change that, this town square agreement so that for special events that they could have an open container.
So we don't want, if, if we feel like we don't want to change that, we just need to say no to the amendment, right?
Yes, that would be correct. Yep.
Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So do, does the city of Covington allow these, this, this type of activity at Legion Field now? Do we know? All right. So let me add another comment, not a question, but a comment. So I've been up here on Friday nights, not every Friday night, but once a month, and I'm on the square just about every single day. It's absolute chaos around this square, especially given the new configuration. I've almost hit people in crosswalks. I just can't, I can't understand why we want to add another element. Another, there's alcohol out here now. I mean, you know, which I don't have an objection to, but just adding another element doesn't, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever to me. You know, I just don't, I just don't understand. And let me add this. My constituency has been absolutely clear. District 1 constituency does not want this at all. Now, I have not, that is from unsolicited, those are unsolicited, that's unsolicited input from my constituency. So they're adamantly opposed to it, and that's just, that's going to be where I stand. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know when we previously discussed this, I believe in 2019, we kind of talked about it and had a very brief discussion about it. And I recall when it came before us previously, it was only to request specific events, for example, the 4th of July event, or any type of major events that we would have on the square where the roads would actually be blocked off, and there's not any traffic or cars coming through. So is this going to, because I didn't see it here where it specified specific events like we had previously discussed before, where the roads would be blocked off? So for me, I think almost kind of adding to what Commissioner Edwards said, if the traffic is coming through, that can be additional chaos. But if we know that it's an event where it is blocked off, and there's not cars coming through the square at that particular event, that may be something that we can look into further. So I would like to see an event where it's a specific event stated in this intergovernmental agreement, and it's only an event where there are no cars or traffic coming through the square. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd really like to hear from the sheriff because there's going to have to be some type of policing. And I know that the city of Covington will police on the city of Covington's property, but who's going to be responsible for policing on the county property? So I've noticed that the sheriff is here. Could we hear from the sheriff, or could we get a statement from the sheriff at some point in time?
Sheriff, do you, you want to make a statement tonight, or you want to make a statement tonight on this issue? Not at all. All right, thank you. Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always to me, and even when I worked at the city, it's confusing exactly what defines the area of the square. Because the square in the middle is round, but the square is also defined by the sidewalks that make up the fourth, the streets that come in. So I think it would make it more sense to me if we would identify it as the green space in the center of the square, as opposed to just calling it the square. Because when you say the square, it means anything. But is that, does that make sense, Megan, to me?
Sure.
I understand what you're saying. I did want to bring one thing to your attention that you all haven't asked about yet, but may shed some light on what you're saying. The open container event times will be limited to 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. Sundays and holidays would be excluded from open container, open container days. It doesn't say anything about sidewalks or how that would happen. It just refers to it as square park only.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess the question is that if, if we approve, I guess, this resolution, I guess I call it that, if we approve it, that means that they can come out and drink, you know, alcohol on the square, and yet you go a block over to Brown Street, or you go, yeah, you go to jail. So do we have to have alcohol everywhere? Can you be good and sit down somewhere in peace without people, you know, drinking all over here and stuff? You know, I thought the restaurants around the square, that you had enough place that you go and sit up high and drink and yell and holler, whatever you want to do. But we have to have it all over in the square too? You know, I just, you know, I just think we got enough place in there already that you can, you can drink alcohol without really just missing the square.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. So we're going to seek a motion. You can vote it up or vote it down. I seek a motion, please.
I make a motion to deny the amendment.
Okay. It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That motion, that is denied. Thank you so much. Next is item number 11. Public Works requests approval of a sub grant agreement with the Atlanta Regional Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We have been working on getting a grant from FHWA for over a year now, and finally have an agreement from ARC to receive the funds to pay for transit study. So that, this contract is with ARC, and we are the, it's a sub grant agreement. So we're getting the money from FHWA through ARC, who is then our partner in this project. So the total estimated cost is about $357,000, and FHWA will be paying 80%, and the county have to pay 20%. So I'm requesting tonight that the board approve for the chairman to sign this agreement with ARC, Atlanta Regional Commission.
Thank you, Chester. I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Schultz.
We've been waiting for this for a very long time. So I make a motion to approve the sub grant agreement with the Atlanta Regional Commission for the transit study.
Thank you, sir. It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in, I'm sorry, Commissioner Edwards.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this was, this was part of the 2021 budget. This is, this is money that was put into that budget, into the 2021 budget. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor? It passes 5 to 0. Next, we're going to have our zoning, just a couple of minutes early. So Judy, if you make your way up here, greatly appreciate it.
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight's request is actually to reaffirm a resolution that was passed. As many of you will recall, in the middle of August, this board took a lot of steps to try to help facilitate things for school to be able to start on time. And one of the items that we did was we passed an emergency resolution that would halt the enforcement of a particular zoning code so that places of worship would be able to conduct schools where maybe children could go and have access to internet and so forth. So we passed that resolution on August the 18th of this year. And doing best practices, our legal counsel had advised us, our zoning person had advised us, to do a 30-day ad in the paper as what is normally required by zoning procedures law. So we placed that ad in the paper, and we advertised so if anyone had any interest or needed to make any comments in regards to this resolution, that they could come at tonight's meeting and make a comment so the board could consider it. So what staff is asking is for the public hearing to be conducted if there's anyone here that have any feelings for or against. And then at the end of this, we would ask for you to reaffirm the resolution R081820A, a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners temporarily suspending enforcement of Section 510 480, subsection C4 of the county zoning ordinance pertaining to conditional use permits required for school and childcare services at places of worship in residential districts. And just to remind you also, this resolution is effective through the end of this year, December 31st. It is our understanding that schools are going, are going back in person, and assuming that moves forward, then staff is not anticipating asking you to extend this, but we do need to make sure that we have followed all of the zoning laws and did it through advertisement in case someone had any comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comment? Hold one second. Any, any questions, commissioners? Hold on a second. Any, any questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So let me say, I, in, in District One, I know of several of these locations that have helped our parents immensely. I know our school system is going through a phased-in, in-person approach now. But from what I understand, it's only for those students that opted in for in-person learning in the beginning. Now, I know the, the kids that opted for distance learning will be wanting to return as well as things, as they, you know, see things safer. But I know, I, I think keeping this in place, I, I truly support keeping this in place through the end of the year at least.
The school year?
Through, through the end of this year, yeah. Through, through the end of this, this, this was the calendar year, right?
Yes, sir. This would be December.
Yeah, so at least through the calendar year, and then, and then before this expires, I'm in favor of revisiting this again to see if it's, if it's even still needed. So, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, that was, that was a terrific idea on the, uh, thank you, Ms. Judy. I just want to say, I know at Nelson Heights personally, there's about seven kids that still come every, every morning from eight until three. Sometimes it's the parent get there a little late, 3:30. And, and they bring their Chromebooks, and they practice social distances. And, you know, it's temperature check when you come in. But this, it's something that was very needed by, by the kids. And, and, you know, it's something when you're trying to assist the kids in their learning. And some of the parents, at least a few of them that I've seen and spoke with, they're still a little skeptical about sending their child amongst a whole lot of kids. And so they feel a little smaller room or class with their teacher, with their Chromebook is, is really good. So, um, you know, it's, um, but it seemed like it growing. Because we, we were having them on about 10, and they have a waiting list about five more wants, it was wanting to come in. So, you know, I don't know where it's going to be a few months down the line, but I think we as citizens and parents and, and people who care, we need to continue to do everything we can to help our kids. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Judy. I'll seek a motion, please.
Some move was stated.
It's been, it's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson.
Public hearing, we have to open the public hearing.
We need, we need to open it up?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, ma'am. It is approximately 7:33. We want to open it up for our public hearing tonight. Those that want to speak in favor tonight, you may come at this time. You have 10 minutes to do so. Those that want to speak in favor tonight. Those that want to speak in favor tonight, you have 10 minutes to do so. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes for those that want to speak opposing this tonight. You may come at this time, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Those that want to oppose tonight. Would anyone like to oppose tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed as well. I seek a motion, please.
Uh, some move, some move was stated by Ms. Judy.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson, and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes four to, five to zero. Thank you. Alcohol license. First reading. The Kroger, the Kroger Company, 5340 Highway 20 South, Covington, GA 316, Ruby Clemens, District 2, first reading. Uh, first reading as well, Liberty Food Mart, 11408 Brown Bridge Road, Covington, GA 316, Shana, Chanel Sirani, District 4, first reading. Citizens comments, this opportunity that we allow citizens to come up and make comments about any topic, you may come at this time, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Please, you have three minutes to do so, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, condition, uh, commissioners. My name is Terry Gray.
Can you please speak to the microphone?
Is 15 Maple Court, you said better, I'm sorry. Covington. I am here today to ask for your help and possible consideration for a problem that I'm experiencing in my neighborhood. I live in the Worthington Woods subdivision off of Highway 81, and we have a health and safety condition that's not being addressed. And by that, I mean, we are next to, excuse me, I'm sorry. We're next to a cemetery, and the grass has not been cut in our area since June. And so it is now four feet high and growing. Now, that's a safety, that's a health issue. Uh, as far as safety, when we leave our subdivision, the grass is so high that we're not able to get a good view of 81 going south from the stoplight. We have to edge out into the highway before we can make a turn going further south. For the record, I have spoken to Mr. Etheridge, who is the new city manager in the city of Portidale. And what he has said to me, uh, for several times, is that the county is cutting the grass. That does not answer my question, because that's, that's not addressing the issues that I'm concerned with. So I'm here tonight to ask you if there is anything that can be done to address those issues for our neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you. Someone will get with you after the board meeting. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so.
John Dobbs, live at 211 Dry Pine Road. I just, I was reading in a paper Sunday about you earning $101,000 a year, Ms. Bell earning $103,000 a year, but y'all's salary is on the low side. And y'all want to sue the county, and back pay is $180,000. Where we going to get, where's Newton County going to get $360,000 to give you and Ms. Bell your raise in this time of need? You know, everybody's out of work. Newton County's houses ain't selling over there on my side. And then you want to take the statue down out of Times Square over there. Who's going to pay for that? Is that going to be put on the homeowners too, to raise our taxes? I know this $180,000 is going to be put on our home, uh, housing prices. Our taxes is going to go up because we got to give you a raise and Ms. Bell a raise because y'all are underpaid. I wish I made $100,000 a year on my retirement. I don't know where I'm going to get my next paycheck. I'm, I'm just on a monthly paycheck retirement. How am I going to keep paying these high prices when everybody on this board wants a raise? I just don't understand it. It just don't make no sense to me. You've been in office now, I know, for four years. You're getting reelected because nobody's running against you. So you're going to do whatever you want to do because you're not going to be able to run again. That's just my, my opinion. Ms. Bell, over on probate court side, if somebody's running against her, I'm going to vote against her. If somebody was running against you, I'd vote against you. You lost my confidence. This whole board has lost my confidence because every time I come in here, y'all want more money, more money, and more money. Where are we getting it at? The houses over there on 162 is not selling. You got two subdivisions, you got houses in them, and they're still empty. They got a subdivision going to be built one day. Ain't got a home in it yet. So where are we going to get the money at? I would really like to know. If y'all have that much money, why don't y'all give it to the homeowners here in Newton County, offset their taxes? That's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Thomas Butler, 650 Flated Drive. Hey, I might get thrown out for saying this now, but why is Kerr up here and him sick? And if he's got that virus, he's going, we're all been, you know what I mean? Yeah, when I come in down there, I had to stand in front of that thing, and they checked my temperature and all that. And if y'all had to come through the same door and come through that thing, they would check you, but y'all don't have to do that. And I don't know, any of you could be sick. How do I know? Saying, what is the matter with, what was the matter with Kerr anyway? Nobody knows. He was sick. He looked like he had a cold. And that's, uh, that's a virus, is about like a cold. So we might all come down with it. And this thing should have been, he shouldn't have came up here, period. And he should have come through that door down there and got checked like we had to do. I noticed that a long time ago that y'all come out of the back door. Okay, we come in the front door, and they check everything in their pockets. We can't bring a gun or a knife in here. But every one of y'all could bring, have a Thompson submachine gun for all I know. Huh?
Come on, guys, come on.
Check, you come through the front door? Okay, I'm not talking about you if you come through the front door. I'm talking about the one that didn't get a check.
Thank you. Anyone else? Citizen comments? You may come at this time, you have three minutes to do so. Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Mason? Commissioner Schultz?
Um, I, I was under the impression we were going to make a decision tonight about a work session and determine that. So I just want to remind us to make sure that we get that,
We are.
that date and time.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, can I, can I in?
Yes.
Okay. I want to ask, first of all, make sure Mr. Butler knows that I came through the front door and that they make sure I had the right temperature. And secondly, I just want to, you know, I've been on the commission longer than most anybody, and I have never voted for a raise for myself. And the time that it came up, I didn't vote for it then. And I'll tell you the reason why. Because I consider to be an honor and a privilege to be a board member on this board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to address a gentleman's question about salaries and everything. That's just a matter that there's an interpretation of state law. Those salaries are set in state law. There's been a disagreement as to how that's interpreted. And we're working on that at this point. So we're getting through that. So just give us some time, and we'll see how that shakes out.
Thank you. Also, um, the county, the county has stepped in to help Porterdale out. Ma'am, to, to help them cut their grass. I don't know exactly what, what Mr. Frank told you, but the county, we are on a rotating schedule that we cut the county, the unincorporated grass. So what we did, we also incorporated Porterdale to help them out in, in these tough times for them. Uh, but I do know there's a cleanup plan. Uh, and you may be aware of that, you may be part of that with State Rep Pam Dickerson and, and that crew to clean up that cemetery. And so that grass will be getting cut. So that's not part of the unincorporated county. It is in the city limits of Porterdale. Uh, but we are trying to do what we can to help Porterdale out, to answer your question. Commissioner Cowan has answered that other question, so. Uh, but we do need to set a date for a work session. Really, really quick. Um, I think we need to do it as quick as possible to talk about the new language that need to go into a bill for our state legislators to, um, to pass through if we get a special call session. And if not, we need this language to be ready to go at the beginning of the year. So we need a date. And we need to do this as quick as possible. As quick as possible. Um, I know I saw two responses today. I'm not exactly sure what they were. I think Thursday, you leaving out of town, y'all leaving out of town? Next Tuesday. Can everybody make next Tuesday? The 13th. The 13th. You know, Commissioner Cowan is headed out of town as well.
Yeah, I'm thinking we're going to be out the week of the 19th.
Okay, so that'll be before the 19th. God, this is very important. So we, we need to, if we can, make that date. And Commissioner Mason will be handling that meeting for me. I greatly appreciate it. Commissioner Henderson, can you be here? Is okay? Thank you, sir. Six o'clock. Six o'clock. The 13th. And I'll be reaching out to the constitutional officers, those that want to be here, and try to make sure they are here, and our local delegation, those that want to be here, and make sure they're here as well. I don't think we have a need for executive session tonight. Uh, so I seek a motion that we all in favor? All right. All right, we got, thank you, thank you guys for coming tonight and caring enough about your community to be here.